At this time, I'll call us to order and we will ask our clerk to establish the quorum, please.
Commissioner Littler?
Present.
Commissioner Askew?
Here.
Chairman Littler?
Here.
Commissioner Moore?
Here.
Commissioner Stoltz?
Present.
And all members are present tonight, thank you for that. We do have an agenda that's been prepared, there's packets out there in the foyer. This was also provided earlier this week on our website. We have a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Hart, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, agenda is approved. At this time, we do have our minutes from our last held meeting here on January the 12th. So those minutes are also in the packet that's been prepared by the clerk. These were sent out in the packet in advance. Do we have a motion to approve these minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Hart, any further discussion of the board of the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as submitted. Okay, we do have our second public hearing on some ordinance modifications that are being proposed. So ordinance 0-01-23 to amend certain sections of Chapter 22 of the Code of Walker County, Georgia regarding land development. Is there anyone that would like to speak on ordinance 01-23? Okay, seeing we're hearing from no one, we'll move on to the next one. The board will be discussing these later in our agenda and be taking action on these as well. So the next one we have is ordinance 0-02-23 to amend certain sections of Chapter 26 of the Code of Walker County, Georgia regarding roads and road right of ways. Is anyone that would like to speak on this one, ordinance number 23? Okay, hearing none, we'll move forward. The last one on our public hearing, ordinance number 0-0323 to amend certain sections of Chapter 1 and 2 of the Code of Walker County, Georgia regarding service expectations for board members for committees and commissions of the county. Anyone that would like to speak on this one? Okay, hearing none, we'll move forward with the next item that we have. At this time, we'll have a ceremonial presentation, recognition of the Walker County Fire and Rescue Personnel for Training Efforts in the Country of Georgia. So we have Major General Thomas Carden, Georgia General, Georgia National Guard, and Lieutenant Colonel Patrick Fairfax, State Partnership Program, Georgia Army National Guard. If y'all would like to come forward, we do have a podium we'd like you to speak from so we can get you on video and get you on our microphone. Yes, we've got some extra seats on the front for y'all coming in. Yes, sir, you have the floor.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Walker County Commission, distinguished guests, I'm Major General Tom Carden, I'm the Agent General for the Georgia National Guard, and I came here tonight, thank you for having us. I came here tonight to thank you all, to thank our leadership of Walker County, this commission specifically, and Chief Hodge for the services of his assistant fire chiefs, James Yearout, Eric Ashburn, and Keith Plot. In addition, he had a cave rescue technician by the name of Mr. Robert Anderson that deployed in September of '22 to the country of Georgia to augment our state partnership program. The state of Georgia and specifically the Georgia National Guard have a longstanding relationship with the country of Georgia. And one of the things that they asked for training on was high angle rescue. Your firefighters, I'm sure you know better than me, are very skilled in that particular technical skill set. They deployed from this community and they made a difference on the other side of the world. And I know a lot of people wonder why they're military and why in some cases, members of your community like firefighters would go so far away from Walker County and why that matters. And I came here tonight to tell you why it matters. When we engage with our partners abroad, then the chances of us ever engaging with them in direct conflict go way down. In addition to that, the country of Georgia per capita was the highest contributor to our operations in both Iraq and Afghanistan. Our 28-year partnership with them and the difference that we feel like we're making around the world can't be done without a whole of government approach. So our whole purpose for being here tonight is to use the two most important words in leadership, and that's simply, thank you. And I brought a small token of our appreciation that features our American eagle and an American flag, and it has an inscription on it that just says, "Thank you" to the leaders of Walker County. Because I'll tell you, not everybody says yes when we go and ask for help like this. You all, you stepped up and gave unselfishly of your time and your talent, and I know Chief Hodge was a big piece of this to ensure that this happened, and every one of you, I'm sure, has probably got some level of veto power when it comes to something like this, because I'm sure there's a lot you'd like to have your firefighters doing here. I just want to tell you, from our perspective, how much we respect and appreciate those firefighters and their families that enable their service. It is significant, they are very quiet professionals and not a lot of fanfare, but they bent the odds in favor of American service members surviving. They save lives through their service that we'll never know about. And so we're looking forward to continue to work with them and learn from them. And so, Mr. Chairman and Chief Hodge, if you'd come up, I just want to make sure I can give this to somebody, and I don't know where y'all want to put it, but if you bring your firefighters up.
Come on, guys, those of you that were involved in this show, come on up.
We got three of the four here. It's a pretty strong crowd we got. Get y'all, y'all, we're gonna get y'all. Get you up on the podium. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, sir, for the leadership. Thank you, you and your families. Thank you all so much.
Appreciate you guys.
Appreciate you, Jeff, sir. Thank you, sir. I thank you enough. Noel.
Appreciate you.
My second question.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you all for your time.
Appreciate you.
I just want to say, General, again, thank you, each and every one of you that came, thank you for your service. This is great, man. Thank you.
Next item on our agenda, is anyone that would like to come for a public comment? We do ask you to keep your comments down to five minutes, and we prefer that you speak on items related to Walker County, so you use your time wisely. So is anyone that would like to come forward tonight and speak? Yes, sir, Mr. Pope, we'll go first. Please state your name for the record, sir.
Okay, I'm Jim Pope, and tonight, I got some questions for you, Mark.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, you're the one that made this motion for a resolution to retain the Girard and Davis and Forsyth County, is that correct? Back in January 2021, been two years.
Yes, sir, for secondary counsel.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
And then, Robert Stoltz is the one that seconded the motion, is that correct?
I don't recall, but I possibly did, yes, sir.
That's what's on the record here. And there was three of you that voted for this resolution. Who are the three, Mark? Do you know?
I know I did.
Okay. Robert Blake Moore, what about you?
Yeah, I voted for it.
Y'all are the three. Brian, you voted against it.
I did. I did vote against it at the time, yes, that's correct.
Now, you voted to pay him at the rate of $200 an hour. Mark, do you know, as a ballpark figure, how much you have paid this attorney during this time?
Now, I don't have that number. If I had been prepared for the question, we can get you that number.
Yeah.
And I will tell you, Mr. Jim, that we use it very sparingly. We've used it when we felt like that we needed a second opinion or something, that their expertise, as they are, the attorneys as well, for the ACCG that we use. So we use them for their expertise when necessary, but very limited, and I don't have that number. You don't know.
Okay, the best number I have, I'm going to try to get the specific number, but it was six or seven, eight thousand, something like that. Shannon, do you know how much it was, ballpark figure?
I would say $10,000 or less. I would say the $10,000 would be the count.
Or less. And the purpose of it is, what you're saying, to assist in legal work, expertise stuff?
Yes. Long and the short of it is, basically, when we came into office, we were transitioning, you know, from a sole commissioner to a board of commissioners.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of, as you're familiar with our Enabling Act, which I have here with me, and all, yeah, there is times that we, for interpretation purposes or to get the opinion, we have, we've leaned on our attorney, Mr. Gottlieb, quite heavily, and when we felt it's necessary to, that's an option that the board has, and that's why we appointed a secondary counsel.
Now, my question now is, what is the benefit that the Walker County taxpayers got from this? We'll use the word $10,000, it might not be there, but what is the benefit that Walker County voters got in return for that money?
I think the benefit that they're getting daily from the board is, and we're getting from that money that we spend, is the benefit of making the transition and setting up the board form of government properly the first time, so that we save our taxpayers in the future and set it up the way that it's intended to be, and that's what that we use them for.
Well, now, was the board form of government, was it not already intact when you came on board?
Oh, no, we had a loose document, just as you're very familiar with the Enabling Act, is a very loose document that's set for interpretation in more than one direction. So we need a guidance on some from people that have the expertise in that field. And that's what the Girard and Davis firm does. As a matter of fact, we've used them, Shannon just was talking about us actually reaching out to them on their free hotline that they have for information for some other ordinance stuff that we're looking at. So they're very, very well-known for their ability to, for municipal law.
Okay, but do you think you could find out the specific amount?
Oh, I'm sure we can get the exact amount.
We might try to cover that next time, because my time is running out right now.
Be more than happy to. May have you some more information next time.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yes, sir.
But I do want to say this.
Yes, sir.
Walker Countyans, they're going through inflation right now, their money means a lot to them, they don't see any wasted. Would you agree with that?
Oh, I'd agree 100%.
Okay, so we just want to be sure the benefit that y'all are doing is getting, or the actions y'all are doing is getting a benefit for the county. Hey, my time's up.
I believe we can show you that 100%.
Okay, next time.
Be glad to.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, I believe you were next.
I'm Randy Brown, I'm here representing the Homeowners Association of Fieldstone Farms. Came earlier, or later in 2022, September the 22nd down here, talk about road conditions throughout our neighborhood. We specifically talked about three different roads. First of all, we'll thank y'all for actually getting started the other day. There was some repair work done at one time in there, unfortunately, it did not sustain very long. Mark and I have talked, Carlin and I have talked a little bit, they are in there cutting up the roads right now, but kind of want to know how those roads are going to be repaired in detail to ensure that they're not repaired like they were this last time, that was only a few weeks sustained. Other questions are, what other roads are going to be taken care of, and what are the future plans for the entire neighborhood, because we're starting to have deterioration as well on the main road. And then, there are some people here from the neighborhood, they may want to ask more detailed questions. The other question, September the 22nd, was, who owns the culverts throughout our neighborhood? Because in the past, we have actually repaired four of those culverts at our expense, but there's 26 more culverts throughout our neighborhood, at some point, it may or may not be in need of repair. So I was wanting to see if we might get preventive maintenance on those, if Walker County does on those, to prevent those from degradating. If they do end up belonging to us, then we'll handle it from there. So if y'all can give us some information on that.
Thank y'all for all being here tonight. I know this is a big concern, I was over there just the other day as well with our foreman, looking at the situation as well, and I know Commissioner Askew's been over there also recently. As far as the culvert, kind of working backwards here, as far as the culvert ownership, we'll have to go back and look at that document from, I believe it was from November of 2016, when the prior administration took those roads in, and I don't remember the, all the details of that, if it was the roads or if it included the culverts and sidewalks or not. So we can, we can get that information out of that document, hopefully.
Okay.
As far as the condition, you know, it appears to us and our folks in our Public Works Department, the main concern is that the base, there wasn't a good enough base put in when that was developed originally. And so what we're seeing is base failure, it's causing, you know, the mud to come up through there, and spider cracking, just due to the wear and tear and the age of the road. So what they have cut out are the areas where they're going to start when we get some dry weather and go in there and dig that out. And some of those places, we may have to dig out a foot, two foot, maybe even deeper, till we get to good solid footing, and then they'll backfill that with stone to try to shore up that base where those soft spots are. And so, once that's done, they'll level it out with gravel, and we're going to need to let that sit and let y'all drive on it, and make sure we get all that settling out of it. And then, once we get into some better weather in the spring, my proposal to this board that we're going to do is add every street in that subdivision to our 2023 paving list, and fix these base problems, and then go in there and pave every road, the entire subdivision. Because as you indicate, especially there in that entrance where you come in right there, a little bit of the hill, that's all starting to spider crack.
Yep.
Again, just more signs of base failure, that if we don't seal that off and top coat that, then we're going to end up having more places that look just like some of those places where it's rolling up now. So it's going to be a little bit of a journey this year, because we're fighting weather and scheduling in, paving, getting that bitted out, and so, you know, it's probably going to be spring and summer to get the project done. But hopefully, this will be the total fix and will carry y'all for the next 20-plus years.
Okay. I just wanted to ensure that you're talking about there's going to be a gap there between the time we're driving on it and packing that down, because what happened in the cul-de-sac is we got large trash trucks coming through there, and basically, that area didn't last about two weeks, and it looked worse than what it did.
Yeah, they didn't go down deep enough, and it started rolling up, so, and they'll have to come in there from time to time and check it, maintain it, and any low spots or any holes that, you know, and keep it maintained. So it's going to take a little bit of a maintenance to make sure we get that solid base, but...
So right now, the main road that you guys are working on and sawing up the other day was Fieldstone Commons and Battle Farm Court, and there's one section on Avenue of the Oaks. What are the plans for Deer Ridge, which is the alley road? That was the last road we...
Is that over to the right-hand side, is the alley into the back of the house?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, it's got a lot of places in it, too, it's going to have to be fixed as well.
Is that going to be on the nearest agenda with what you're doing now, or is that going to be later in the year?
No, it should be, all as we're going through there and digging out to fix the base at the same time.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're going to go through and every road in there.
Okay. Is Bobby here?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's Bobby.
I talked with Bobby the other day, I want to give a shout out to him, we talked about a road sign exiting the neighborhood, and he had that sign actually replaced, the sign was actually broken. We had tried to fix it ourselves, but within 24 hours, he had another sign up there in place and looks good. So, thank you again for what y'all started, hoping that we can finish it up like you're talking about in '23, and won't have any more issues.
Yeah, we've got several other roads in the Rock Springs Noble area that we're also going to be adding to the list, that we'll be bringing forward in the next few weeks. So that's going to be kind of our area of focus in '23, is in the Rock Springs Noble area as a whole.
Okay. Anybody else from Fieldstone? I'll turn it over to y'all.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Sure, thank y'all for all coming.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank y'all.
Yeah, anyone else that would like to speak tonight? Okay, we'll move forward with our agenda, seeing no one coming else forward. Okay, at this time, this is where the board will discuss or take action on these ordinances. This first one here is the ordinance 0-01-23, an ordinance to amending certain sections of Chapter 22 of the Code of Walker County, Georgia regarding land development, to provide for an effective date to repeal any and all conflicting ordinances as part of this ordinance, to provide for severability and to provide for other purposes. So this is the one that we had some discussion on as well, where the current ordinance, they're under Section 1, states, currently, all decisions made by the Planning Commission for a variance request must be appealed to the Board of Commissioners after the discussion. It has been revised to read, any action taken by the Planning Commission regarding a variance request shall be recommended to the County Board of Commissioners for final decision. Any discussion of the board of that language, or any additional thoughts on that?
So John and I were at that meeting, and one thing that was brought up, and I think it's a very good point, it's something that hasn't happened so much in the past, when they approve or deny something, they're going to try to be at these meetings and bring documentation why, in reference to a reason instead of just of an opinion.
That would be very welcome.
So they did speak of that for quite a while, didn't they, John and Michael talked about that, and they're going to start doing that from here forward, so it'll help us along.
That would be very helpful.
Very good. Any other thoughts on this revised inserted language? And again, this is what the staff captured from the discussion of the pleasure of the board and the direction, so if this is good and acceptable?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore to approve this ordinance 0-01-23. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion of the board on this ordinance? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this ordinance is approved unanimously. Okay, the next one we have is ordinance 0-2-23. This is an ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter 26 of the Code of Walker County, Georgia regarding roads and right of ways, to provide for an effective date to repeal any and all conflicting ordinances or any part of ordinance, to provide for severability and to provide for other purposes. Believe we did have a couple of small modifications from the previous language, talking about the fill, let's see.
I think the, one of the major things, Carlin, the base, moving the base, and then using an engineer, being able to use a third party to test for you.
Yes.
That was the two, I think that's the two only verbiage changing.
I think in particular, when it came to the fill, we inserted suitable structural fill in place of chert, which is a rather generic term, and suitable structural fill within the industry as a more definite position.
And there's also...
The amount of binder from...
Yeah.
Two inches and four.
Two and four, right.
And then, for clarification, we added, should the sub-base be in question, then the county inspector will have a geotechnician, engineer, test the material at the expense of the contractor or the road building. So that way, if there's a question or concern of the developer or disagreement, then we can get a third-party engineer involved and have them do the testing. So that was also added, that's what I was looking for. Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Askew, do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the ordinance is approved. Okay, the next one we have is ordinance 3-23, and what was in this one before was failure to attend at least eight regular voting meetings of the Planning Commission in a calendar year without justification to be excused. Members of the Planning Commission shall notify the Planning Development Department or Planning Commission Chair when they intend to be absent from the meeting. So what's been inserted, as members are prohibited from having expertise, communication, discussion outside of the meetings, including but not limited to verbal, written, or social media communications regarding matters that are to be heard and voted on by the Planning Commission. Members found in violation of this rule shall be subject to removal from the Planning Commission by a vote of the Board of Commissioners. Also, we inserted, under Chapter 2, Administration, Article 1, General Section 2-97(c), is hereby amended by adding the following sections to read as follow. Number four, failure of the members of the Planning Commission to comply fully with the Georgia Open Meetings Act, OCGA 50-14-1, the Georgia Conflict of Interest of Zoning Act, OCGA 36-67a1, or any provisions of the Development Code applicable to property owners operated by or occupied by members of the Planning Commission, constitute cause for removal by the Board of Commissioners. Number five, new appointed members must complete six hours of training in zoning procedures and/or comprehensive planning conducted and/or sponsored by ACCG, GMA, or the University of Carl Vinson Institute of Government. No newly appointed members shall be allowed to vote on any zoning matter until at least six hours of the aforementioned training has been completed. The appointed members may participate in all meetings, discussions, and activities, but may not vote until six hours of the training has been completed. Failure to receive six hours of training within three months of appointment will be automatic grounds of removal from the Board of Commissioners. And then also, has been added, Section 6, all Planning Commission members must complete a minimum of six hours of training in zoning procedures and/or comprehensive planning conducted and/or sponsored by ACCG, GMA, or the University of Georgia Carl Vinson Institute of Government every two years. Failure to receive six hours of training every two years will be automatic grounds of removal from the Board of Commissioners. So those were the modifications that was made to capture primarily the six hours of training for all new board members, and they cannot vote until then, but also, any and all existing members will go back for additional ongoing continued education training, a minimum of every two years. Any discussion or question on those modifications?
Let me one clarification. We had discussed, John, I think we discussed it open-ended, about in-house training, and we're not seeing any verbiage in here, does that need to be in there, David, or is that something that we can, we can accept into something that's...
Well, what this would be is just the minimum standard, so any additional training over and above, the more the better.
Right.
Anything that additional that the staff can put together.
Yeah, I think what we're talking about was on the front end, you know, to...
Yeah, and I think what we're talking about was on the front end, you know, to get that much training initially, it could take, it could, some of these classes may not be available, so we could in-house some stuff and put on some stuff to help them get some of that initial time up. And that's all, I just wanna make sure that everybody is good with that or that we don't need to change anything there.
Can the six hours be gotten in-house?
That, that was my point, is maybe part of that. And that's, John, you wanna speak to that?
Well, there is some training March the twentieth. Day class.
Right.
Members have been invited to as well, and I think most of them are going, from my understanding, we need to check on that. So, yes, that would be additional training on top of that too.
Okay.
Just in-house training, and so that's what I will do as well.
Yeah, the Carl Vincent Institution of Government is doing a six-hour class on the twentieth of March in Cartersville, and I know Valerie has already made contact with ten of the members. Nine of them have committed to go. There was only one that that was a conflict and then she was trying to reach the others. She had just not made connection with them. So we very possibly could end up with eleven members going to the training and then the county, you know, is paying for that, so that's, uh.
And they'll fulfill that six-hour commitment.
And then I understand through the, through the Regional Commission, uh, they are going to start every January offering that class in early January for this region, so people don't have to travel to Athens or try to do something on their own. The Regional Commission is sponsoring this one and they're just gonna, instead of doing it in March, this one's a little bit late. They wanna move those to January because there's other counties needing that same training to kick off in January for new appointed members.
Very good.
So it should be pretty, pretty seamless. And then additionally, you know, the, the, uh, the director over planning and zoning can also do an orientation for new members and go over meeting procedures and additional things like that over and above, but this just sets that minimum standard of, of training.
And that's what I was kinda alluding to, is if we didn't have a class or something wasn't gonna come to heat, we could in-house and get them, get them, get them up to being operating, you know, let them be operating members while they're waiting on the class. Okay, no problem, no problem.
Sure. Any other questions? All right, hearing none, do we have a motion to accept ordinance O dash three dash twenty-three?
Motion to accept.
We have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the ordinance has been approved. Okay, also kinda in the same line to, to get this kicked off, we have a resolution R six dash twenty-three. A resolution of Walker County Board of Commissioners to establish certain training criteria for continued service of the Walker County Planning Commission. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas the Board supports the desire of members of the Walker County Planning Commission to serve our community, and whereas one tool available of the Board is to assist planning commission members to provide for training on the fundamental concepts of land use issues, so members can make effective and informed recommendations, therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that all existing members of the Walker County Planning Commission must complete six hours of training in zoning procedures and/or comprehensive planning conducted and/or sponsored by ACCG, GMA, or the University of Georgia Carl Vincent Institute of Government. Be it resolved that the county will provide each member with the supplement to offset the expenses of the required training. The further resolved that the failure to receive six hours of training by July thirty-first of two thousand twenty-three will be grounds for removal of office by the Board of Commissioners. So it resolved and adopted the twenty-sixth day of January twenty-three. So what was brought to our attention, the way our ordinance was, and that being placed as an ongoing ordinance, we had a little bit of a gap with our existing members and had some question, confusion if they would be able to go to the February, March board meeting and vote, even though some of them have been on there for quite some time. So we felt like it would be in good order for clarification that all of those existing members uh, under this resolution would know that they had to get their training by the uh, end of July thirty-first of this year. And again, it looks like most all of them are signing up to go to get it done in March. So we, you know, we should be in good shape, but it does extend that to July. So that was something since it was existing members that really did not need to be recorded in the ordinance book, that really need to be addressed by a resolution. So any questions or thoughts on this?
Yeah, one question. So you got twelve people. Who, who's gonna track this training? Will that be down to the planning commission or?
Uh, currently, right now, because we tried to handle the, the payment and the, that type of stuff, Valerie at the commissioner's office has been coordinating that, and she's been in communications with the planning office and speaking with Christie and verifying information, but just since we had to handle the, the fees and costs and stuff like that.
That's good.
It was just easy for, for Valerie to take care of that.
So, as they, you know, we, we pay these guys fifty dollars a month to do this. Will that be compensated for this training?
Yeah, what we were looking at, the training on this meeting is two hundred dollars, and then we were gonna pay them that meeting stop and to go, which is also the fifty dollars.
Sure, good. All right.
Okay. All right, good question. Anything else? Do we have a motion to approve resolution six dash twenty-three?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Askew. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, resolution is approved. All right, the next one here I'll read is resolution seven dash twenty-three, a resolution of the Walker County Board of Commissioners to allocate funding for the integrated digital message board system. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Board, is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas Walker County communicates with the public through a number of outlets during times of calm and a time of emergency. Whereas support from our public communications effort and outreach being inherently, uh, apparent during the COVID nineteen crisis, and whereas the Board desires to enhance the county's ability to rapidly communicate with those who may not have access to existing communication outlets. Therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, does hereby allocate up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars from the funds from the, uh, from Fund Department two-two-two, the General Government, account number five-four-two-five-zero-zero dot ninety capital, other equipment for the purchase and installation of the integrated countywide message board system that can be used during times of calm and times of emergency. So resolved and adopted the twenty-sixth day of January two thousand twenty-three. Commissioner Hart's put a lot of time and energy and effort into researching this and appreciate, you know, doing so, so I'll ask you if you'd like to provide further information.
I can. So, so this started about a year and a half ago at, at, at the Emergency Valley Community Center, and it's probably a one point something million dollar building. We got a sign out there that was like in front of a beer store, you put the stickers on. And started working with them on getting a sign out there, a digital sign, because it, you know, we really use that center a lot in that community. And they were actually gonna purchase a sign theirself. They had, well, they were gonna try to. They had some money saved up, not that much money. But I came to Shannon with this and he suggested using some of the ARPA funds money for this due to his communications in the community. Well, so Mr. Joe DeGees started working with Stewart Signs and getting quotes from them, and they got a couple quotes last year and we started back on it the first of this year and we got some quotes. Of course, quotes are tied to a lot of things. You have to buy five signs to get the discounted rate. And there's a price increase on February the first. And the cost per sign, of course, there's many different options, but the sign that we thought would best suit these centers, it's not the biggest sign, but it's not the smallest sign, was twenty-one thousand dollars a sign. And there's a approximate, and I read it say approximate because it depends on the location and the terrain and the ground there. Fifty-three hundred dollars to install each sign, and then the electrical would be done by Mr. Todd Byrd and his staff. So, there, there, there's actually nine locations that we considered. We looked at, of course, we haven't nailed anything down yet because we're trying to get the funding allocated prior to February the first before the signs go up and the discount goes away. So that still needs to be determined, where will we put the signs? The, the, uh, two hundred forty million, is that what it was?
Two hundred forty thousand.
Two hundred forty, yeah, 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 sorry. The two hundred forty thousand dollars is, uh, that, that would allocate signage for seven locations. One of the signs would be a little different size. The one in front of, uh, the taxes, tax assessor's office up there would be a little different size and have to be reworked inside the box. So that's an approximate number, and it is out of those funds as I mentioned.
Yeah, as Brian mentioned, the, the discount that they're offering if the decision is made to commit to a minimum of five is fifteen percent. So it's a pretty substantial savings. Once the commitment would be made, then they could firm up what the installation prices would be based off of the locations, uh, selected. With this technology, these would also run off of a cellular communication. So Joe would have the ability from any place he had internet connection where he could immediately get a message out to the community and also customize messages to each local community. And so, as we mentioned, over in the East Emergency Valley, uh, they have, you know, maybe an upcoming event for that community and may only want to be promoted in that community by chance, uh, or whatever. There's just a lot of flexibility uh, to use this technology without having to go outside to site. Uh, that's one of the challenges we have with the message board at the tax office. Joe literally has to go out to the sign pole and connect an old-style serial port and stand out there with a laptop in his hand to make any changes to that sign. And so that one's a little bit wider sign. I think it's about eleven foot. And so we're working on some, um, final numbers on exactly what it would be because these are a little more narrow than that. I was afraid it just wouldn't look right in that existing case and all, because it's a very nice sign, uh, that's there. And if we put something that's two or three foot more narrow, it's gonna look odd. It's just not gonna look right. So, uh, there is still some details to work out, and really what's driving this is that fifteen percent discount that, uh, is on the table for the, for the commitment.
Question, Mr. Sharon, just a ballpark figure possibly. Any thoughts on about how much in the way of funds is in the ARPA account? Any, any idea?
I don't know the exact number, but I think there's, uh, over five million dollars. And, you know, we've been utilizing that ARPA funds, I think, very appropriately, a lot of times for capital projects and for safety and also for first responders and also, uh, there's, I think, at least five and a half million dollars still there for this board to allocate.
In the event of a power outage, would these signs be, they would be down?
Yeah, there's not any backup battery to these signs, so they would have to have ongoing electricity.
Okay, okay.
To be able to function. You know, they would have that cellular connection, so they don't have a hard phone line to them, but they would have to have that power and the cell services be up as well. But, uh, Stewart Signs, the, you know, been in business, as you can see here, for for fifty years, and there's a lot of signs in our community from them. They've got a great reputation and, uh, they've been good to communicate with. And then, you know, as far as the mock-up that you see on the reader board, that's just a mock-up that they did, so we would also work with them on what that logo looked like or verbiage looked like, and that may need to even be customized in different communities, like over in the Emergency Valley, instead of maybe saying, obviously, commissioner's office wouldn't be there. Maybe it just says Walker County, uh, East Emergency Community Center or what have you, and the colors are optional. So there's a lot of leadway on the fixed wording at the top of that sign or logo or, or naming of that could be really customized on each sign for the fit to the community.
And, and, and speaking of that ARPA funding, um, what, in just general layman's terms, uh, what other, what other things is that funding, being able, we able to use it for? Just kinda, just a broad brush?
Well, we did allocate funding for the, uh, for the water project through the Water Authority, and then mostly it has been used, um, or we allocated a million dollars for the jail upgrades, renovations that's underway. And then, uh, there's been funding I know spent for, um, our fire department for equipment.
So my question is, is, so we, like, our emergency, we've been able to, that's, that's kind of a loose fund as far as we've been able to feed it in and use it in multiple different areas.
Multiple different things, and primarily we have kept that to capital or infrastructure type projects. We've not, not used it for ongoing recurring expenses.
Well, and I, uh, Brian, I think you've done a great job putting this together. I, I, like I said, I hadn't been really on, up to speed with it, but I think it's, you know, getting information out is always important. We do that by multiple means, you know, with, with the social media and all that. And, and I, I, I think that it's, it serves a purpose. There is a purpose, uh, like to know, of course, I, I'm, I'm a little concerned that, you know, when you don't have power, that's when you, a lot of times, that's when you need to get information out. Of course, the general information is, is all there, and, and we've got Facebook and websites and all that. I, I've got, where I'm having issues is that we, we've got things that, we've got some things that we we're gonna, that we've got to spend some money on that we need to fix, and I'm having a little heartburn over a quarter million dollars on the signs when I've got some, some major issues, uh, with, uh, our, our, uh, North End repeater, as you're aware of, on, on our, uh, generator up there, our nine-one-one center, our generator there. We've been talking about that for over two years.
We've got splashed allocation for generators and we're working on some matching federal funds we applied for.
Well, I mean, but, but the bottom line is, is our generator system, either, either or, is, is if they're down, we're out, we're out of business there. So we need to, we need to be moving some of that stuff forward.
Yeah, so there's, there's eight hundred thousand dollars in the splash budget earmarked specifically for generators. We were trying to get matching federal money through GMA, and that was put in three years ago or so. We keep getting updates on that, but we were hoping to leverage those dollars because there is.
I just think.
Matching opportunity.
Yeah, and, and that's not bad business, and when you, when you can do that, but we're talking about emergency services, emergency operations for the county, for all the citizens, and so in my opinion, that, that's, that's way up here on the list of important, like, way up here on the list of important. And so, um, yeah, I, you know, I, I wanna see this. Me personally, like I said, I, I don't think it's a bad idea. I'd like to see a little more, like, know a little bit more about, uh, like I said, what the total number would be, uh, what's their perpetual cost gonna be to operate them? Uh, what's the life expectancy before they actually become obsolete because everything moves at a pace? You know, you can't get an incandescent bulb, everything's LED, dah 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 dah. So I just, I just wanted to make sure before we go, you know, spending a quarter million dollars on it. I mean, like I said, that just seems like a lot of money. And I don't, and I'm, and I'm not against it, but, but I'm all about getting some other stuff handled that we, that we need to get handled that I feel are priority. That would just be my position on that. And, uh, I, I would, I, I do think that the saving, you know, fifteen percent saving is, is great, but are you, are you saying that it's gonna cost the, the, the total of two hundred fifty thousand dollars?
That we don't know.
So we're just wanting to allocate some money and see what it takes? Well, basically, it would cost, if you wanted to get a close figure, I mean, it's twenty-one thousand per sign, and there's, of course, there's different options on the signs. You can get different pixels and all kind of stuff, but that's, if you looked at the sign in front of the library, the sign we're looking at is about the same size as it. Okay. And it's about the same pixel as it. So it's twenty-one thousand dollars. Install fee is five thousand, that's twenty-six thousand. So if you wanted to use some safe numbers, you'd say thirty thousand dollars a sign. If you just put it five locations, that'd be hundred fifty thousand dollars. But if we, if we went ahead and, and put one at, at, at Carolyn's office up there that was a little more expensive, you know, that would be, so it's hard to put a finger on exactly how much it is. Right. And if we chose to do this, we would have to work really hard in the next four days to figure that out. Well, that's, that's. To lock the pricing. And, and that's my point, is I, I think it's a great project. I think it's well worth looking into and getting some, I'd like to see some more information, just, not that this is not good information, but think that there's some other things, and to try to, here again, to try to squeeze it in in four days to, to make fifteen percent, I, I'm just not real comfortable with that myself. And then, of course, any, anything else, anybody that would have to, to put in there? I, I'm not trying to, to hold the project up, but I, but I, but I think that having a little better scope and maybe narrowing that scope to where this is how many we're gonna do. this is how many we're gonna do, this is where we are, then we know a, 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 a total, exact amount, I, I'd feel a whole lot better about that, just me personally.
Any thoughts right now on locations?
So, the locations we kicked around was the Rossville Athletic Center, the Civic Center, uh, the Government Services Building, that's just Carolyn's office, uh, the Hinkle Fire Station, the, the Center in Villanow, the Water and Sewer Authority, and Cedar Grove at the, uh,
Community Center.
Community Center, so those were the, the ones we, we talked about. And they would all be the same with the exception of the one in, in front of, uh, the Government Services Building.
Or there's existing already, we'd be upgrading that.
Yes, you just put a new board within that sign.
And, you know, and that board still functions, but we thought if we had all of them the same, and that's the thing, we don't know what that one would cost, so we've kind of budgeted it up. What we, as you can see, is a high number in this budget to make sure we allocate enough money to do that. But I've just did the math, if you figured twenty six thousand on six signs, you're at a hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars. So, this whole, you know, depends on, you know, five, six, or seven, exactly which locations could be determined. We were just looking at just trying to spread across the community, so as one example, the Water and Sewer Authority, we don't have any other government building in that vicinity.
Right.
And you've got a facility that's right next door to the post office and right next door to the only bank in that area, so it's a high traffic area. We could put a sign there just with a simple intergovernmental agreement and, you know, cover that community, so we're trying to just cover the different communities from, from a messaging standpoint.
I, I, like, here again, I, I, I think it's a, 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 a good project, I think it could be very feasible, uh, in the essence of, of just, you know, getting, uh, a, you know, citizen talking about the, the hard times and the spending of taxpayer dollars, uh, I, 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 you know, I'm gonna have to see a little tighter number before I can allocate money, especially when being questioned on, on, on other areas where I feel like that we're, we're using it properly, so I, I mean, I just, I, I wanna support it, but, but I just think to get it, to, to narrow that scope, to, to, to rush it over fifteen percent, I'd rather, I think it would narrow the scope and decide exactly what we, we think needs to be, I think it's a good, I mean, I'm not against the project, but just to throw a ballpark number out there and let it stick on the wall, and I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that sarcastically, I'm just saying that I get it, we're trying to beat a four day window here and I'm not, I just don't see that.
One way you could tighten the number up, if you just said, you know, this for now, you could eliminate the one being added at the tax office in Rock Springs, I mean, there's an existing sign there. We could just keep that one as is and come back later, make that a completely separate project, because it's different anyway. Determine exactly how many locations you want to do, we know they're telling us it's about an average of five thousand dollars per installation. So, you could get down with a number probably within two or three percent real easy, uh, plus or minus two, three percent if you determine, uh, you know, I did the math here on six signs, you, for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, you could do six signs.
Well, my point is, we were asking for two hundred and fifty, we were asking for a quarter million dollars, and now we can do it for a hundred and sixty thousand.
Well, it depends on
I, I'm just
Just depends on how many you're looking.
Well, I, I'm with you, that's what I'm saying, we need to have a better scope.
Of two forty was up to nine.
Right, and we, we, we had put a little extra money in for the one at the, at
Rock Springs.
At Carolyn's office, yeah, because we didn't know exactly what that would cost when they looked at it. So, we, yeah.
So, on the list that you've stated there, you listed, uh, run through that list one more time if you would.
Well, so if you just talk about the standard twenty one thousand dollar sign, there was one, two being the Civic Center, three being Hinkle, four being in Villanow, five at the Water Sewer, and six at Cedar Grove, it was six. Six of the standard, uh,
Twenty six thousand three hundred.
Yeah, yeah, counting installation.
Yeah.
Uh, so times six, just round that up and call that a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for six signs to cover those six locations. So, this resolution could be, you know, could be modified, we could even list those locations out specifically and list those locations and, you know, fund it, hundred and sixty thousand dollars for those six locations.
Any potential extension on staying in that fifteen percent window, uh, or is it a hard and fast cutoff of?
I don't know, Joe did that legwork, I don't know.
I don't know, but I do know, um, as far as the discount goes, they're still going to offer a discount in February, it'll be at ten percent instead of fifteen.
Okay, okay.
That gives us a little more
Gives a little time.
Time to kind of look at it.
Yeah.
I, I, I just feel better, I like the project, I just think we can narrow it down and just get a little more specific, you know, uh, to be, you know, accountable.
That's eight thousand dollars. Could take five additional percent on a hundred and sixty thousand, that's eight thousand more dollars.
And that's, how many's the?
That's the six.
Look at the six.
Okay, okay.
That's allocated, well, over twenty six thousand, six hundred dollars per sign to do six signs. And that would cover, what was the, the first one you had, we had the Civic Center?
Rossville.
Rossville, okay, yeah, the Rossville Athletic Center.
That six you got listed earlier.
So, Rossville Athletic Center, Civic Center, Hinkle, uh, Villanow, Cedar Grove, and the
Water Sewer Authority.
And the sign at the tax commissioner's office?
We would just hold on that project and get more information and determine what that one would actually cost. That's the, that's the wild card, that's the one that's just hard to know.
Yes.
So, what number are you at now?
Hundred and sixty thousand for the six locations, Rossville Athletic Center, Civic Center, Hinkle Fire Station, Villanow Community Center, Cedar Grove Community Center, and the Water Authority in Flintstone.
And if any of these buildings have a generator, should they not be hooked up where the power goes off?
I'd say this
Yeah, if, if the, because they'll be wired into the building's panel, and if, if the panel's generator backed up, they'd be able to kick on with y'all.
Yeah, so two of the locations do have generators, that's a good point, yes.
I knew that one.
Cedar Grove and Cedar Grove.
Cedar Grove both have generators.
Okay, okay.
Better, we're looking at generators for any of these other locations?
Yes, looking at one for the Rossville Athletic Center, so we can turn that into a shelter, and also we leave one at the Civic Center as well. Uh, because that's one of our current disaster shelters and there's never been a generator there at all. So, that's two, two of these locations that, uh, considering generators for as well.
And you said, Mr. Chairman, there is eight hundred thousand dollars earmarked for
Generators. In the splash budget, yes, sir.
And the cost of one generator just ballpark, maybe fifteen, twenty?
Yeah, it just, depending on the size, I mean, anywhere from five thousand to fifty thousand, you know, there, it just depends on how much horsepower you need. And some of them actually can be even more than fifty thousand, but, you know, it's
What, what are we looking at on the, the generator system, the backup generator system for the nine one one, ballpark?
Don't remember the
Mr. Hod, you got that number?
I don't remember that, we've had some quotes in the past.
Ballpark?
Yeah, I think it's been out of service for four and a half years, I think three years, three and a half years ago, it's thirteen thousand.
At the nine one one?
Uh, no, at the
No, the North End, what about nine one one?
Uh, it depends on if you want to go natural gas or, or back with a food. So, the information for the natural gases is there.
Right, that's what we talked about a couple of years ago.
I don't know that number, it's been a while, it's, it's been talking about for years as well.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, I'm just, I, I just, like I said, priority, priority wise, I wanna see us get some of this stuff, like, that's been out of, uh, North End for half, four years, it's been down. So, so, yeah, we, we gotta get, we gotta get some of that, if we got eight hundred thousand dollars worth of generator money, wouldn't sound like we need to be buying some generators and we need to be looking at getting those before the price increases go up, would be my, my suggestion.
Okay, so, so talking about, and that is a good suggestion, but, but talking about the ARPA funds, if there's five million dollars there and we spent this one sixty, it'd be about three percent of three percent of the remaining five million.
Is there a generator at the Water Authority?
Yes, there is.
So, which ones are backed up by generator, Villanow, the Water Authority?
Cedar Grove.
Cedar Grove, so three of the six, Rossville's coming, so it'd be four of the six.
Civic Center would be coming too.
Okay.
So, there'd be five of the six.
Yep, just not Hinkle.
Yes.
Well, Hink, yeah, but Hinkle would, I think when that's built, yeah, that would be part of that building, so it would, you might as well consider it, when we're buying them, we need to buy one for theirs as well. I would, I would think for sure.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, I think my thought is, if, if I knew that these had generator backup, that they would not fail during the power outage, I would certainly be a lot more in favor of moving forward with this. Uh, I mean, what are y'all's thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with you, if we, if we're gonna put generators on, because, I mean, if it's a disaster, chances are you're not gonna have power and you can't get the message out.
Absolutely, yeah.
But if we're all gonna commit to working on getting these generators and getting ones for nine one one and the towers that we need, then
Yes.
Then, um, if we're gonna do it, I say we move forward tonight and not lose eight thousand dollars.
And knowing we have that money earmarked for generators and our thousand dollars?
Yeah, that's all they could be spent on.
And it, and we're ready, and we're ready to, to move on that, and so we start getting, we get some bids, get some
Well, we had a internal meeting two weeks ago, some of the staff, and we're also getting bids on service contracts for the existing generators to have, um, service inspections and maintenance on all of the generators. And so, we're getting proposals on those now. And Curtis Cretmore's been going around with some vendors and showing them each of the sites and they're looking and working to bring back a proposal to put service contracts on all the generators as well.
Well, so, all right, to get up, to get this done, so we've got money allocated for generators. We've got this narrowed down to one sixty-ish?
For six signs.
For the six signs. We're gonna, and so, we're gonna be modifying the, 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 the actual
Yes.
Resolution because we were asking for a quarter million, start two hundred and forty thousand, so we've, we've already whittled ninety off of that. So, what I wanna do is, if we're gonna amend this, I want it amended, that we're gonna move on by purchasing the generators for these locations as we purchase these to be installed as we get the, I don't want to spend the money on signs and then kick the can down the road on the generators, and I don't mean it in a negative way, just something come up, so if we're gonna allocate the money for the signs, and we're gonna have to amend this, and I wanna see it amended, that we, that we allocate the funding necessary out of the, 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 the generator fund, whatever you call it, to, to move immediately on these locations as we move with the signage. They need to be simultaneous, not six months down the road, you know, they, we need to, if we're gonna do it, let's do it, and I would agree to that, I don't have a problem with that, but I think that's the way we need to handle it.
I, I think that's a great idea, but really on those splash funds, we, we really need to be able to come back with another resolution specifically for that and, and not cloud it with this, I mean, I totally agree, support with what you're saying, but this resolution here is really geared toward this sign situation. And if we say generators and we need to know how many and have a budget and
So, then, so do we, so, so, so we can't, so you don't, so you don't think we can amend it to, to say that we, we would allocate, and that, that number, like I said, we don't have the number, we don't have the actual number here. We just ran a number on a calculator that we feel like we can do. It could run over that or it could run under that. My point being is, if we, if, for me, for me personally, I, I also, I can support it if we, if they're all generator backed up, we, we've at least got that behind us. I don't have a problem with it, but I don't want to, here again, I, I don't, we don't, we wanna move on it. And so, you know, we've got, we've got other, generators are a big topic right now. And while we, if we've got that kind of money put back, then I wanna ask, the, the, we go ahead and draft us up something for our next meeting to, uh,
Well, I mean, if you wanted to allocate the spending of, as a whole of eight hundred thousand dollars, but we don't have any, we don't know what they're gonna cost.
But that's what, but that's the same thing you're trying to do with the signs, we were gonna allocate two hundred and forty?
We had a, a budget estimate based off some data.
I know, but why were we ninety thousand dollars more?
Because we don't know what the one
Here we go back. I know, but I mean
So much bigger.
Yeah, but you see what I'm saying, it's just, we don't have, but I, I, for a hundred, I don't think it'd be a hundred thousand dollars more, if it would, I wouldn't be wanting to buy it.
We were also looking at nine, we were looking at nine and this is a list of six. So, that took seventy five thousand dollars, almost eighty thousand dollars.
But talking about the generators now, I, I, I know what you're saying, but didn't you say you're just trying to get some other monies to help pay for those generators?
How long have we been trying for that though?
Well, it's, it had in the original schedule, it was a couple of years process because it's federal funds.
Right.
It's through GMA.
Right.
And so
But, but point being is, and I'll say it again, the most important thing we, that we operate is our nine one one center, but so that's what everything, everything for emergencies and all comes, so we, you know, to wait another year, if we've got this funding and, 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 and I'm, I'm gonna throw this out there, if we're gonna talk about waiting on federal funding to help us buy generators, we got eight hundred thousand dollars there already sitting there, we need to be buying generators, or I'm gonna, or I would say, no, I don't wanna spend a hundred and sixty thousand dollars on this until, till I've got every generator in the county that we need for emergencies up to speed, so.
Well, like you mentioned, I think it's a great idea that these projects that we're talking about, we tie the generators in when, you know, at the, at the same time. My only point was, it needs to really be a separate resolution to allocate the funding for the generators. It's budgeted in the splash, but that dollar amount would have to come back before this board.
Unless we just allocate eight hundred thousand dollars to move forward with, with generator replacement throughout the county where it's, where it's necessary for emergency services or operations.
You may not use all those funds, but it's allocated.
Yes, yeah, you could do that, but I just wanted you to realize we don't have any data, but if you wanted to do the whole thing.
I, I understand that, like I said.
I think that would work, I mean, I said, yeah.
Yes, I mean, and like I said, and it would be, you would have to come each, each one, you would get the information, you'd bring it back and we would spend what was necessary. But at least we've made the allocation to, to coincide with this, this, this allocation of, of the signage. We would go ahead and be able to put it together and
Well, I guess to make sure we're on the same page, the money's allocated now in the splash as overall project, so actually what we'd be doing
We'd be earmarking it.
Now, it's already earmarked.
Well, then we just need to prove to move forward with it.
Approving, yes.
Because it's just sitting there right now.
Yes, you would be approving to move forward with those projects.
And it's, so it's been sitting there since, when, when would we first, was it allocated, you said, which splash was it?
It's the two thousand twenty splash.
The twenty splash, so we've had the money for three, basically?
Which started in April of twenty one.
Okay.
Because citizens voted on it in November twenty, the collection started in April first, and so funding started coming in in May, and then that's what, you know, we've purchased fire trucks and other things out of.
Okay, I, I, I'll
So, if we modified this to say a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Do, just, we, we can, we can do that, and what we can do is have David just to draft us, we, we can look at, instead of, if, if y'all don't feel comfortable allocating, that money's already earmarked, so there's no reason not to allocate it, it can't be used for anything else, correct?
That's correct.
All right, let's just do it and go ahead and
Go ahead and put approval for the chairman to use eight hundred thousand dollars to start spending.
Yeah, yeah, for, yeah, exactly, well, yeah.
Okay, so we'll just put here, um, additional. He says Cedar Grove has a generator?
Yes. Water generator, yeah, Water Authority.
Civic Center.
I wonder if you could, uh, wire it in, if, if it could be wired in there? And Rossville does not.
So, Rossville, Hinkle, they're tied up.
That's correct.
So, two generators.
Yeah.
Okay, so what we'd have here, let me just read this and make sure we're all together here. Uh, this is therefore be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, does hereby allocate up to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars from Fund two two two, Department General Government, fifty four, two five zero zero ninety, capital. Other equipment for the purchase and installation of an integrated countywide message board system that can be used during times of calm and times of emergency. Additional allocation Additional allocation approval of 800,000 to purchase generators from the 2020 splash fund.
And that would be all inclusive, that would be the generators for these signs and we'd move forward with the generator, like I said, 911 and the tower and any, so just keep, and Civic Center, so we could just keep them. Because there you're gonna be able to bid a package of generators, it's gonna save you a whole lot more money than we just saved tonight. I can assure you of that.
Oh, yeah.
So if you, you put that package together and we do that, that, that may really help us and spread that money even further.
Well, it makes the signs more effective too.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Win-win.
So do we need to note the locations on there?
If you would like, we can.
I mean, I, I, do we need, I don't know if we need to or not.
I mean, we, we've got the list, it's just, we can.
Okay, I'm good.
Be these six locations, the Rossville Recreation Center, the Walker County Civic Center, the Hinkle Fire Station, Villanow Community Center, Cedar Grove Community Center, and the Walker County Water and Sewer Authority.
Yep, that's where I go.
Agree with you?
Sounds good.
So do we have a motion to approve this resolution as modified?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Hart, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. The next here is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to declare property from the Public Works Department as unservable surplus and removed from the county inventory. Whereas OCGA 369-2 provides that the county governing authority shall have the control of the property belonging to the county and may by order enter into its minutes direct the disposal of, of any real property which may lawfully be disposed of and make, uh, excuse good and sufficient title thereof on behalf of the county, whereas the Walker County Public Works Department has requested the Hunter Alignment Rat, or Hunter Alignment Lift, excuse me, Badge Number 16 be deemed unserviceable surplus and further request that the property be removed from the county inventory. Therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the Hunter Alignment Lift Badge Number 16 be hereby declared unserviceable surplus, removed from the county inventory scheduled for a surplus sale, so resolved and adopted the 26th date. This was a Hunter Alignment System that was bought by the county many years ago, used. Uh, the county no longer does alignments in-house. And so the Alignment Rat had limited use of what it could really be used for and a lot of the heavier vehicles were getting in, it wouldn't, wouldn't lift them anyway. So we actually, uh, pulled this unit out about a week or two ago and installed a four-post, uh, 14,000 pound lift that will be able to raise our transit buses and our F-550 trucks and F-550, um, trucks for Public Works and our fire department. So that has been installed, we also installed a, a new door as well to give full access. Uh, Joe has taken and come up and made photos and videos of this, of actually showing this operational. And so the plan is, instead of this thing just laying out under the shed and being there for who knows how long, since we just pulled it out and it's in good condition, to go ahead and approve the surplus and get it listed on GovDeals and get it sold. And, uh, so, any questions on that?
No, sir, no.
All right, hearing none, do we have a motion to approve this resolution to surplus?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hart, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Blakemore, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is approved to surplus this Alignment Lift. Okay, that was our last resolution, so at this time we have on our agenda for Commissioner comments, Commissioner Blakemore.
Just appreciate everybody coming out, getting involved and getting your input. If I can help you in any way, call, text, or email, thank you.
Same thing, guys, thank y'all for your hard work, thank all of our county employees, um, thank our emergency services and then thank the citizens for being involved and helping us to, to, uh, with ideas and, and, and feedback that helped us to govern better. So thank y'all for your participation.
Mr. Hart? Thank you tonight, John, he's in the crowd here. This week, or last week, I got a call from an unhappy citizen. And John and Christie worked together and got a plan of action in place for this gentleman and John's meeting with him tomorrow, he met with me last Friday at 4:30. So that's a committed employee on Friday at 4:30. I didn't want to be there either, I know you didn't, but, but, uh, got it resolved and I just appreciate y'all's efforts working with this individual, John.
Uh, before we go any further, why don't you talk about American Idol?
I was saving that till, till next time, but I'll talk about it now.
Are you gonna be on American Idol?
I am.
All right.
So, hey, I mentioned that about two months ago, we got a, a, a young man in the Villanow community who is a student at LaFette High School, Ethan Slar, and he is gonna be appearing on American Idol the last part of February. So we are having a concert for him on the 11th of February at the Immersy Valley Community Center. And our new sign will be up by the end of.
I think we need to appoint you as the liaison and let you travel with him on the trip.
I'm going to travel with you, yeah. So, so the community of Villanow is pretty, you know, tight, small community. We've gotten together and, and putting this on, so this was my mom's project.
Awesome.
So, uh, it's gonna be a great event.
So he's going to perform?
He's gonna perform, yes, a free concert, but we will have a tip jar there, Mark, if you come.
Yes, sir.
Chief Hod, I've let him know, so make sure the fire lanes are clear. I think Sheriff Wilson's gonna have a car there to help us with that, so, yeah, it's gonna be a good event for the community.
We just had.
What was that date again, Brian?
It is February the 11th, yes, and Colin just got the parking lot painted.
So we got all the parking spots.
No, not all of them, we didn't get the back lots painted because we ran out of money, Colin said, but they could figure out how to get back there, so.
What time?
Uh, the concert, is it two, from two to four that day?
Two to four, okay.
Joe has put it on the county's.
E-Newsletter.
Facebook page.
Awesome.
Yeah, so I was gonna mention that next meeting, but I'm missing it again, our next meeting, but, uh, yeah.
Wonderful.
He's a, he's a great talent, he sings country and western music. Old country, Johnny Cash, Merle Haggard, so you'll like him.
Heck, yeah.
Uh, yeah, he's really, really good, if you hadn't heard him before. He's played at the festivals here in LaFette at the Honeybee Festival a couple of times, so, yeah. It's gonna be a good time.
Awesome.
See you there.
We'll put it on our new sign.
Thank you. Along with our new generator.
Yeah. Make sure we got our generator there. We still have, sir, we still have the event, so.
What's that?
So let's make sure we got our generator there, that way we still have.
Get the generators there.
We got you.
Yeah, well, that one, so, yeah, we're good there. Robert.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate everybody coming out tonight and, and thanks to all of our hardworking employees. Appreciate what, uh, what y'all do, appreciate your hard work. Shout out to Bobby Snyder, Bobby, I appreciate you helping me out on a couple of issues this week. Thank you very much, job well done. I wanna invite everyone to a Wild Game Supper Saturday, February 4th at the Cedar Grove, uh, Community Center, starts at 6 o'clock. Uh, the food will be wonderful and it's $15 for adults, $5 for kids under 12. There will be a shotgun raffle, $5 a ticket or five for 20, that you can buy during the supper. Uh, you must be present to win and it's gonna be a very nice over and under 12 gauge. And so, uh, come have some wonderful food, some deer and some groundhog and some swirls, so it will be absolutely phenomenal and come buy a ticket for a shotgun. So, thank you.
Very good, uh, one additional update to share, I've got some feedback from the City of LaFette this week where they have gotten everything lined up and in order for the, uh, stormwater drainage system expansion next to our Annex 2 building. That's had us held up on our sidewalk installation to get the mural in. So soon as the weather breaks, uh, the city's gonna start that installation. That's a, kind of a joint, shared project with the city and, uh, that's gonna take care of some of the stormwater issues there and around the Annex 2 and some of the other businesses and merchants there in that area. So they're gonna tie that all in under their underground system and then we'll be able to put the sidewalk in and get the mural up and hopefully that'll all be done way before the Honeybee Festival starts. So that's, that's the goal, so that's all in motion, just needs some good days of weather. So get that knocked out. So, uh, do we have a motion to go into executive session and please state the reason?
Motion to go to executive session to discuss, uh, employees.
So we have a motion for personnel, okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Askew for executive session for personnel, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Stoltz, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we will stand adjourned for executive session and then we will return. It is 8:22.
Hi, I'm Joe Leguee, Public Relations Director for Walker County Government. The Board has just entered executive session. This is a process that allows elected officials to discuss a specific, sensitive topic behind closed doors. These are topics that are exempt from the Georgia Open Meetings Act. Executive session topics must fall into one of three categories, litigation, real estate, or personnel matters. In terms of litigation, the need may arise for the Board to consult with a county attorney on pending or potential lawsuits, settlements, claims, administrative proceedings, or other judicial actions brought by or against Walker County Government, its officers or employees. Real estate covers discussions regarding the future purchase or acquisition, disposal, or lease of property. Personnel matters would cover the discussion or deliberation on the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, or dismissal of a Walker County government officer or employee. Now, if a vote is needed pertaining to an issue discussed in the executive session, it must be taken in an open meeting, otherwise it is not binding. Thanks for watching and we'll be back in a bit.